Good evening and welcome to the Victoria City Council meeting for Tuesday, December 5th, 2023. Ms. Hilbrook, would you please call roll?
Yes, sir. Councilman Delgarza?
I am present.
Councilwoman Zelis?
Here.
Councilman Crocker?
Here.
Councilwoman Scott?
Here.
Uh, Councilman Loffgren?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Young?
Here.
And Mayor Bocknight will not be joining us this evening.
Right. At this time, I invite everybody to stand for the pledges and remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. Once again, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the city council member, uh, meeting. Uh, Mr. Garza, how are you doing this evening?
Excellent. Thank you.
Good, good. Thank you.
Uh, I, I do have some announcements and reminders.
Awesome.
Uh, I want to remind council that this Friday, we have a quarterly workshop that will take place, uh, Friday, December 8th, 12:30 PM with the Community Center Annex. Um, that agenda should be posted probably tomorrow. Have we posted it today?
It's already posted.
Oh, it's already posted?
Yes, it is.
But come on, man, wake up. Pay attention. Uh, we're still accepting sponsors for our bicentennial, uh, ball and want to give a big thank you to Prosperity Bank for being our title empresarial sponsor. For more information, contact Keishen in the city manager's office at 361-485-3030 or visit victorix200.com. Uh, on behalf of municipal court, municipal court will be hosting a Cookies and Cocoa in the courtroom event tomorrow, December 6th, from 4 to 6 PM. This is a come and go event and Santa Claus will be present for photos. The public is invited to join us to meet court staff and enjoy some holiday treats. On behalf of Main Street, Marion Main, previously known as Christmas on the Square, will take place this Friday, December 8th, from 6 to 10 PM, and on Saturday, December 9th, from 10 AM to 5 PM. The public is invited to attend this free event in downtown Victoria where there will be over 100 vendors, kids activities, live music, pictures with Santa at City Hall, and so much more. Special thank you to this year's co-hosts, Mother Cluckers Downtown and Explorer Victoria. On behalf of the library, uh, the public library's annual gingerbread house workshop will also take place this Saturday, December 9th, from 10:30 AM to 2 PM in the Victoria Community Center Annex. Gingerbread House kits will be provided while supplies last, and we want to thank friend, the friends of the library for their annual support of this event and the library that ensures we offer free programs to our community members. On behalf of CVB, we want to remind the public that Explorer Victoria's annual You'll Love Shopping Victoria holiday shopping promotion is currently ongoing and ends on December 20th. Explorer Victoria is also accepting submissions for their Merry and Bright Smiles Christmas photo contest, which is running now through December 19th. We're inviting the public to take a fun pick with any of the nine Christmas displays downtown and submit the photo for a chance to win great prizes. Uh, to learn more about either of these promotions, the public can visit explorevictoriatexas.com.
All right. Anything else?
Nope.
All right.
Almost got through those without, without a hiccup, except for not know, not remembering the agenda had been posted for Friday.
Very good. Um, at this time, we'll move into public and employee recognitions. I know, uh, Ms. Byrd is out there.
Um, I, we're actually going to call, um, Daryl Lisak.
Ah, okay.
To come up on behalf of, uh, Kristi Uker, who couldn't be with us this evening.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
To introduce, uh, this item.
I didn't see Kristi there, so I didn't want to assume.
That's a good idea. So, um, yeah, I'm going to actually introduce, but I, I do want to, uh, just throw something out to council as well. Um, so Christmas is on Monday this year. Um, we will actually be servicing our Monday customers on December 23rd and December 30th. We're pushing that out early and often to make sure that we get that out. It's a big change. Um, if we move it to Wednesday instead of picking it up Saturday before, they would have a much longer wait, uh, before their trash gets picked up. So we'd rather get it early than get it late. So just keep that in mind and we'll be putting it out on Facebook and everywhere. We're working with Ashley's group to get it out as well as, um, I think Kristi was meeting with the radio station. So if your garbage is picked up on Monday, Christmas Day and New Year's Day, it'll be picked up on Saturday, the 23rd and Saturday, the 30th. Um, and now I'll introduce Meredith Byrd. Um, she's the, uh, chair of the Keep Victoria, current chair of Keep Victoria Beautiful to, uh, introduce to you our winner for this month for beautification.
Thanks, Daryl. Um, and before I quite get into the beautification award, I do want to say that invitations have gone out, uh, to our volunteers for Keep Victoria Beautiful. We're planning our volunteer appreciation event for, uh, Thursday, January 18th at the Community Center Annex. Uh, we'll provide dinner. We're, um, booking some live music. We're going to give awards. And, um, so everybody who has volunteered at any of our events throughout this, this past year is invited. Um, there should be an invitation in your email. It's going out on Facebook. And so, um, we'd really love to, um, you know, have a good showing of our volunteers so that we can let everybody know how much we appreciate them. And so, um, on to the show. Uh, this month's award winner is Daniel Industries' Power Equipment on Main Street at, at Red River. And as you can see in, in the photo, this is, um, an extraordinarily well-kept property. The building is in fantastic shape. Um, it's always meticulously mowed. The landscaping has these beautiful drought tolerant and native plants, which is fantastic for down here. Um, everybody, it hit and it quit raining and it shot up to like 106 degrees for the next six weeks. Anyway, um, this is, um, you know, drought tolerant and, and native plants are really, really nice, uh, for, for our climate, um, water conservation, all, all of that. And so, just personally, as a biologist and a native plant enthusiast, I love seeing stuff like this. This is not my nomination. I'm just, just giving them, uh, an extra, um, you know, round of applause. So, like I said, um, man, anytime you drive by Daniel Industries', it's just looking fantastic. This is what we love to see in a local business, putting their best foot forward and really, uh, being an example for our community of, um, you know, um, embodying, I guess, the, uh, principles of Keep Victoria Beautiful and of, uh, Victoria in general. And so, without further ado, um, I'd like to introduce Colt Daniel and, um, congratulation, congratulate him and Daniel Industries' for winning the December Beautification Award.
Well, I appreciate it. Uh, we worked really hard to get here. Uh, I think in, uh, February will be our two-year anniversary. Um, this is such an honor. Thank you all so much for giving us this award.
Thank you very much. Dr. Young? Dr. Young? Paging Dr. Young. Uh, we, I do actually have a, a brief employee recognition that's not listed on the agenda. That's okay?
Sure. Please.
Excellent. Thank you. All right. So, uh, we have all already gotten pretty accustomed to the fact that, you know, Tiffany and our municipal court staff do an excellent job in pursuing professional development opportunities. And so I'm excited, uh, to share with you that one of our municipal court clerks, Tara Tenney, uh, recently earned her Level One Clerk certification. Uh, to earn the certification, a student must complete 40 hours of education and pass a three-part exam that covers topics such as trial processes and procedures, traffic law, court ethics, post-trial, post-trial processes, professionalism and communication. And I know that Tara's here. So I want to just briefly just acknowledge and say thank you for your dedication to professional development. She came from the educational world. So this is quite the career change for her. And so we appreciate you, you know, taking the time and, and the effort to pursue this as a career. We're, we're grateful for that. So thank you so much.
And where would I be without hosting or managing this without acknowledging Commissioner Burns and Commissioner Sexton, who happened to join us today? So, thank you for your presence. Um, at this time, we'll move on to items from council. Are there any items? Um, I would like to thank staff and the public at whole for the wonderful events this weekend of the, the tree lighting, uh, along with Main Street and the art walk, and then certainly the parade. It was a fantastic weekend of events. It's a, a little bit of a challenge with what's going on in Dalyon Plaza, uh, but it was awesome and, um, wanted to thank everybody for the hard work put in.
It seemed to me like it was the best attended one in a long time. I saw a lot of people.
There was a tremendous amount of people. There was a lot of energy.
Yes.
And, uh, it's exciting to see that downtown. Um, and can't wait to build upon that.
Yes.
I, I wasn't able to attend, but I watched some of it livestreamed and, uh, other people around me were also watching it livestreamed. So that's very much appreciated, too.
All right. At this time, we'll close, um, items from council and move into, um, citizens' communication. Um, I have one green card here. Um, at this time, I'll, uh, Mr. Von der Rohe, if you'll please come up to the podium, state your name and please keep, uh, your comments to three minutes, you know.
Uh, Mayor Pro Tim and council. And, um, I'd like to thank, uh, the city manager, Jesus, for getting that mural put up, uh, under the overpass. I appreciate it. It looks very nice. And, uh, I would like to thank, uh, Jordan Fries. He's the Assistant District Attorney. He prosecuted that shooting at Christ Kitchen about three months ago and they arranged a plea bargain and she got, uh, five years in, uh, prison. So I appreciate the district attorney's office and all the others that, uh, took part in it. And, uh, also I would like to thank the high intensity drug trafficking organization. It's the one year anniversary of the drug bust over at Queen City Park. They busted seven people. Four were narcotic related. I appreciate it. And, uh, they've made other, um, law enforcement's made other busts at Queen City Park, you know, since then. And I would like to read the last review over Queen City Park. Um, it says, "Too much violence, drug dealers and homeless people. Not a safe place at all, especially at night." I wish Victoria would do something about it. Um, on a scale of one to five, they're like 2.4 out of all the parks. That's the lowest, uh, rating. And a lot of the people that's there, they're not from Queen City Park. They're from other, um, places and a lot of them aren't homeless. They have homes and rent houses in other parts. And I've heard that some of the people there are from the old group from under the hill. And, uh, I would, uh, wish the police could continue doing their job like they're doing and make more arrests and, you know, don't give them deferred adjudication and probation anymore. Just send us them to five years like the last one. And, uh, you know, there's stabbings and shootings and stuff, you know, in the Queen City Park area and Christ Kitchen. And I do appreciate Christ Kitchen for, um, making it safer. They got two, um, um, armed, uh, police officers there and it is safety. It is a lot safer. But I would like, you know, maybe Queen City Park to be repurposed. Maybe they can make it a, a pickleball court there or a pickleball place, you know, because that's real, uh, popular or just put a police academy there. You know, that would probably take care of everything. Uh, have a sub-police station there. And I think the people would probably go to another park. They'd probably go to Will Rogers Park and hang around. But thanks and have a good evening. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Von der Rohe. I'd be remiss if, uh, I didn't acknowledge Commissioner Ward. You snuck in. Um, sorry I missed you. All right. We'll close, uh, citizens' communication and move into, uh, items with the public hearings.
Item C1 is an ordinance adopting the Unified Development Ordinance by replacing Chapter 21 in its entirety and deleting Chapters 5, 9.5, 12, and Article 6 of Chapter 20 of the City of Victoria Code of Ordinances.
Good evening. I'm Julie Fulgham. So.
Good, Ms. Fulgham.
Very, very long time coming. Um, we've been working on this for many years. Um, but I don't know that he really needs an introduction, but we do have Chance Sparks with Freez and Nichols, who of course has, um, been with our consultant through this entire process here tonight. And he's going to give y'all a short presentation on the proposed UDO.
All right. Thank you, Julie. Chance Sparks, Freez and Nichols, 1251 Sattler Drive, San Marcos, Texas. Uh, so really excited to be here, uh, to be presenting the Unified Development Ordinance draft to y'all, uh, this evening. Uh, this is the culmination of about a two-year process. So kind of what I'm going to do today is take you through what, what was the process that we followed, a few highlights from that diagnostic when we first started looking at the code, and then a basic orientation to what you see before you. Uh, and then we'll lay out what this approval process looks like going forward. So as a reminder, it's about a 24-month process, uh, from diagnostic to drafting and now into the adoption process. Uh, over the last couple of months, you see the series of meetings, uh, with either in public, as public meetings or interested parties, uh, some necessary revisions, and then just went through the commission hearing process, I believe, last week. So, uh, leading us to tonight. Uh, and then from here, we'll go through a hearing and adoption process and then an as adopted version, uh, based on any changes that occurred during this, this time. So just a quick refresh on the diagnostic. Uh, it, the whole point of this exercise was bringing your codes, your different types of codes together in a user-friendly format where everything talks to each other. And in the process, seek opportunities to simplify the development process. And the last one, probably most important, and do so in a legally sound manner. Uh, I'll be coming right back to that topic here in a minute. Uh, we did have stakeholder interviews involved in this process, talking to your real estate community groups, uh, engineering architect firms, basically talking to a lot of your frequent flyers that are code users, either as applicants or code users in the roles as board members, commissioners, even city council. Uh, and, uh, to make sure we had a good understanding of what's going on, what are the big themes. Um, the one I put at the top of this was city staff are great. That was one of the big pieces of feedback we got. Uh, but we also got the feedback of part of what makes them great is they're making a code work that sometimes doesn't. And so that's one of the things we wanted to make sure that we memorialize. How do you do things today and bring that into the official code document in the process? There's also things that you, you've been doing historically that, uh, are typically, I'm going to say dizzy word, zoning actions, uh, because zoning is more than a map. It is processes, it's certain types of regulations. So you're, you had bulk standards, uh, setback standards, things like that, and site plan requirements. But you hadn't actually invoked that state law language that makes all that okay. So it's making sure that we got all of that lined up correctly while still making sure we didn't take it a step too far and transition you into something that would make you different. We think that your regulatory process here is special. Uh, so that was been one of our priorities throughout this. Uh, and then a lot of effort into just clarifying language. Uh, some things that we talk about in this process is creating breadcrumbs. Because for an outside developer coming into Victoria, your code almost becomes challenging because of what it doesn't say. You know, they're, they come in and they're looking for that for a zoning map and a zoning regulation. They're not going to find it. So, uh, we've actually structured this code to help in those circumstances and kind of lead them to, oh, this isn't traditional zoning. This is something else entirely. Okay, I understand. Uh, so that was a big theme of, of the efforts that we put forward here. Uh, we also brought in your previous planning efforts, uh, focusing on redevelopment revitalizations, is getting to that do the math aspect of development. Uh, it's how do you preserve historic areas? We've talked about parkland dedication. That's become a very, uh, a very interesting discussion, uh, since, uh, throughout this process. Uh, looking at mobility and connectivity efforts, uh, and, and making sure we're getting the quality of infrastructure that you're expecting as you go forward. Uh, making sure that you're not setting yourself up for more expense later, uh, getting it right the first time. Uh, so we built a lot of ease of use types of improvements, you know, recommended stripping out unnecessary bureaucratic processes. We actually have a couple of good examples of that that we'll touch on. Um, making sure everything speaks to each other, uh, realigning all your minimum standards to the market, basically looking at what is the market trying to build? How are you aligning to it? Uh, and then a big thing was remembering that Victoria is different. Uh, that was one thing that really informed pretty much every internal call when we were working on this, on this drafting process, was remember that this is something that's much different than you find elsewhere and it's special. So that's kind of the diagnostic effort that we went through. Uh, but now I want to give you kind of your orientation, uh, of your code, kind of what are the key points and highlights in each article of this. Uh, our understanding is this is going to be discussed also at the workshop on Friday. Uh, so what would help me in this process as we go through it is to think about, what are the things that you might, maybe want a little bit deeper dive on, on Friday? So that way we come prepared and ready. Uh, so again, everything's consolidated in Chapter 21. You had things that were scattered between, uh, four, uh, four different areas of your code, got them all into one place. Uh, it has all of your overarching authoriz, authorizations. This is a really important aspect. It covers all the bases. And, uh, and also we're very clear about no zoning map is adopted with this UDO. We're very explicit about that. We also think this is the first UDO in Texas that is set up that way. So you may be new in that regard. Uh, within enforcement, uh, we've kind of itemized out all the types of violation, clear responsible persons. And what's really important is all the remedies are available that are legally authorized. Everything under state law is invoked, uh, all the different processes that have stood, uh, that withstand court challenge are all in here. So you've got a full menu. Um, it'll be on, on your, on your code enforcement, on your city attorney, things like that, to pick the right, uh, the right tool for the job as they go forward. Uh, we also have non-conformity language in this, uh, provision. This is really important because it creates steps to improvements over time. It's not an all or nothing, which is kind of how your current code is structured. So if you're just making like a small addition, you have to bring everything into conformance. This kind of creates some thresholds using that roughly 30% threshold so that you can make improvements without it triggering, whoops, without it triggering everything. This is not great for somebody that likes to talk with their hands. Uh, so the way it's structured fundamentally, small adjustments, small obligations, big adjustments, big obligations. So, basic concept of fairness is how that's structured. Uh, within Article 3, uh, this is actually your, your building codes. Uh, this was not actually originally planned for inclusion. Uh, we decided to add it because so much of your development regulations are based on what's happening in your building codes. We brought that together. Uh, that all gets merged together into, into the single suite. It's your most current, uh, that you have. Uh, the, the biggest change that you'll find in this is a builder's licenses, builder's license requiring insurance. All that's doing is saying a general contractor has to carry the lowest level of insurance that's required for all those subcontractors that they have to hire along the way. So, uh, again, kind of looking to that issue of fairness, uh, and also help make sure that contractors you have doing business are doing right. Uh, that's kind of a big thing. Uh, land uses, uh, this is probably where you see the most significant breadcrumbs in, in terms of, we don't have zoning, but this is how we work. Um, so again, the title of this is very intentional. You see the explicit language that the city does not invoke its authority to divide its limits into districts as established in long legal citation, uh, where we're just explicitly saying we're not doing that. Uh, this, all your regulations are organized by land use, uh, of the property and then organized by subcategory. Uh, makes it really clear, easy to follow, includes all your common useful references. You know, once they know that, oh, I could do this use, the next question they ask is what's the parking? Uh, so all that's right there in one place. Uh, consolidated dimensional table is what you'll find in here. And then, uh, incorporates your historic districts, but also brings in the neighborhood conservation districts that you might remember from the prior workshop that we talked about. All your design overlays remain in place. Um, we have added a waiver procedure for the residential proximity-based standards. This is the, if you're within 300 feet of a residence, it require it, there's a waiver process where instead of it being prohibited or requiring certain things, you can get sign off from the neighbors. Uh, so we've added that. A couple of key impacts here that you'll see, uh, reduced minimum lot sizes in some cases. Your setbacks are more consistent. So if you have a change in use, it doesn't mean you have to knock down the building every time. Uh, your parking ratios are a little bit more standardized, uh, with reductions in many cases. Uh, you have specific use standards to help with those incompatible, incompatibility issues, and then a good pathway for neighborhood standards, uh, that doesn't go, doesn't take that full step into historic preservation. It gives you something to work with. Uh, within development standards, uh, this is where you find all the other pieces that generally constitute a site plan. So, uh, what you'll see in this is really pretty minor changes to your existing requirements. Um, you, you will see, uh, surface requirements for parking that are a little bit more clear, queuing standards. Uh, I always called that the Chick-fil-A provision, uh, for, you know, do you have your queuing going all the way out onto the street? Uh, you have access management standards that have been added. Those are designed to complement other efforts that y'all made to create a safer, uh, road system. Uh, and driveway design standards are all pulled into this, all your typical standards, that type of thing. A few changes or clarifications since the workshop. Uh, we verified IT is our source for traffic impact analysis. We improved the scoping language for traffic impact analysis. So that's a little bit more clear, uh, more used to what is written, like how engineers are used to reading it. Uh, and then, uh, we've also added the encroachment license officially. Uh, we've allowed encroachments in the past, licensing, but there was never written down anywhere. Now it's written down. Few other cool things that are found in this provision. Uh, you've got some, uh, defensible shared parking standards, a really clear site plan requirement, uh, your cross-access, improved screening, uh, and you have a defensible clearer sign code. It's, uh, basically it's easier to read and it's more complete. Uh, it also doesn't rub the wrong way on the content neutrality. Your landscape standards, uh, are generally reflecting what you do now. Uh, just polished those up a little bit, made them easier to read. Uh, you'll see some fence design limits between building face and right away. Uh, screening and mechanical equipment and container screening is something that's been added. That was coordinated with Public Works. Uh, some really simple lighting standards about anti-glare and shielding, uh, just a kind of, kind of a good neighbor provision. Uh, and then again, your sign regulations are updated in this. Uh, Article 6 is your subdivision regulations. Uh, really the changes in this are focused very heavily on cross-communication with the other articles. Uh, and then some updates to plats based on recent changes in the state laws. For example, uh, prior to this last state legislative session, there was such a thing as a minor plat defined in state law. Now there isn't. So we had to actually recreate. So we had to actually recreate that definition. I got some improved language for oversizing when that occurs with your infrastructure for how that gets, how that gets accomplished. It corrects your order of operations about when you should have your construction plans for a subdivision before a final plat. And then all really clean cross references, all, cross references to all of your design manuals. Couple of things I think are notable here. There's an adjustment to strike that sidewalk installation requirement. Believe y'all talked about that at prior meeting. So now that those sidewalks in a new, new subdivision are done at the time of building permit. And then one other notable impact, you've got some streamlining, streamlining through plat adjustments or through plat exemptions. Under your prior code to this, or your current one, I should say. Some things we get, would trigger a plat that there really isn't a public benefit to it. Those are usually circumstances where it was a lot that was, you know, sold by meets and bounds back in, I don't know, 1963. And already has utilities in front of it, already has a street in front of it. They want to add a, a new garage and it triggers, oh, actually you have to come back in for plating. There's no real public benefit to it. So we've created an appropriate exemption for those types of scenarios. Makes it easier for, for people that sometimes don't have the most means to make improvements to their property. Because that's where you see that type of issue pop up the most. Flood damage prevention, overall, y'all have a really solid flood damage prevention ordinance. We brought in most of that. We clarified how elevation certificates work here. There was a blanket exemption that was present in your code that we knocked out. It was inconsistent with the National Flood Insurance Program. Your elevation requirements, we just restated and clarified. And then you have a code supplement that we've preserved. Basically, that's your best available data language that you're designing for drainage and stormwater on the basis of the best data that's out there. Not just the data that's officially adopted. Parkland dedication and development, this is one where we basically said, you know, let's step back, give you all a little more time to think about this one. And we see this commonly in new, in new parkland fee adoptions. We do actually have a recommendation though, which is to take a look at your mapping of parks, particularly pulling in HOA parks. And also school district playgrounds and things like that to see what is your geographic equity issue that's showing up? And, and see if maybe there's a more effective route. You might be better off improving existing parks, making pedestrian improvements, things like that that increase access to your existing versus necessarily going out and building additional parks. So also you want to think about operations and maintenance down the road. Lastly, you have all your procedures all in one place. So it means you've got a set of kind of master procedures that applies to almost everything. And then there's the nuanced things that, that vary based on the type of permit that's involved. The, you have a good completeness determination defined, got good graphics where it's literally a flow chart for how things work. New procedures for your conservation districts. And then lastly, your definitions have been comprehensively evaluated. What we really look for in that effort is making sure your definitions are not actually regulations. That's something that happens a lot in cities. They'll bury a regulation by accident in a definition. So all that's clean, easy to read. So as far as next steps. What we'll be looking for is identification of what we call any dius amendments via the adoption process. And then we kind of laid out what we understand as the first, second, third reading plan for this. We'll deliver a final deliverable and then you've got your conversion of processes. So that's it. This is the, this is kind of the end of the road here. I'm happy to answer questions or if you've got things that you know you want to talk about on Friday, kind of help me out on that too.
I have, I have some questions. On the blue slide on number 12, you said it encourages mixed use development. How so?
The number one way it does that is by actually stating it. How is it regulated? That was one of the points of confusion in your current, in your current codes is it wasn't obvious how that was treated. So now we've made that more clear and it's, it takes a very light touch in terms of the regulations on that because it's something you want to encourage. You also have the shared parking provisions that are designed to help out in those circumstances, recognizing people are parking once, visiting multiple businesses, things like that.
And that leads to my, that leads to my second question. You said there's improved parking ratios? Can you, you just gave me one sort of an example. Are there other examples? Because I have, I have a problem with our current parking requirements. And I think they're too much. You say they've been, have they been reduced?
Generally, they've been reduced, I think almost across the board. There's a few that I think we did not modify. The ones that I think stayed generally the same. I think your residential ones stayed largely the same. I believe a lot, most of your commercial ones either reduced or they were changed in how they were calculated to try to get them to a square foot based calculus.
And we can, knowing that that's, you know, a question, we can, we can obviously more intentionally, you know, put together some information for Friday.
That's why.
That shows that, yeah.
I also would like to know, there was a thing about refuge container screening, which I'm glad to see. How is it different from what our present, we presently have?
Okay, I think your present, do you know that off the top of your head, Julie?
Yes, so it's currently it is triggered by a site plan. So when a site plan is triggered, a dumpster enclosure is triggered. The proposed ordinance states that when a new account is triggered, that's when, when you're setting a new dumpster with a new account, that's when the dumpster enclosure would be triggered.
Are we gonna, on Friday, are we gonna talk about parkland dedication fees?
We can talk about anything you'd like regarding U D O on Friday.
I'd love to talk about that on Friday. And billboards, I'd like to talk about that on Friday too.
Which both of those are not included in, in, in the draft that's, that's being introduced today, to be clear.
And I, and I, and I understand that.
Billboards are allowed.
No, I know, but I mean, I'm assuming you're, you're bringing it up because of the comment that Julie made at the last meeting. And so I just want to be clear that, you know, we did pull out the park. Yeah, we pulled out the parkland piece and we left the billboard as is.
Well, I'd like to discuss billboards at the Friday meeting. Please.
No, I mean, this is still, you know, I'll remind everybody, this is still a working document.
I just want to make sure that those things get discussed on Friday.
Okay. We'll, we'll hold on anymore from, from up here at, at this time with, Julie, did you have any more? Mr. Sparks, you, you good? So at this time, I'm gonna open up C1 to, to the public for anyone wishing to speak on this matter. Please, Mr. Swearingen.
Thank y'all. I think I know most of you, but my name's Lee Swearingen. And been in business here since the early seventies, the real estate business. I've developed several subdivisions, including Woodway and Springwood. In the city of, a number of them elsewhere. I've been involved in the commercial real estate business for many, many years. We own, own the Ron Brown company. So real estate's my, my life. And unfortunately, or I guess fortunately, I've lived a long time and have witnessed the council over the years, make some decisions hastily. And doing so, do things that affect us all for a long period of time. Matter of fact, we're still paying for some of those decisions that were made many years ago in, in a very hasty manner. My question, my, my, a couple of things. I think this is a great document. I will, I got it about three weeks ago. So I'm not gonna read it to you tonight. But, but I would encourage you to read it. It's, it's, it'll put you to sleep pretty quick. Anyway, there, there are some things in here that concern me. One is it's kind of, keep, several things to keep in mind. Victoria's an old town. When you start trying to make something out of it, there, there are things that pop up that really create issues. And we especially find that in the commercial real estate business. The, the other thing to realize, we don't have any growth here. In the last 12 months from ending in November, there have been permitted inside the city limits of Victoria, 58 houses. 58 residential permits. Folks, that's nothing. We used to do four, 500 back in the seventies and eighties. The, when you start looking at development, I think we all try to, need to try to figure out a way to work together to bring development into the community. The other issue is, oh, and by the way, thank y'all for taking out the sidewalk deal and the, the park thing. It's, you know, I, both, most of my developments, I put parks in, hike and bike trails, that sort of thing. Most of the parks have been closed down, fenced off and are no longer, no longer in use. The, but if a large employer wanted to locate at the port and say, I'm gonna bring 300 employees in, we couldn't house them. We have no housing for that. Port's working hard. They got a lot of, a lot of opportunities out there. The, the other thing we talk about is affordable housing. In affordable housing, you have to think of the development process because there are options in development that can make affordable housing I guess more affordable. So like, I think there's some opportunities to make some adjustments with this. And the, and I think there's some great stuff in here. I think there's some stuff that's been left out, quite frankly, that I think we could do. Billboards being one. In the commercial world, we struggle with billboards. They're always in the wrong place and you can't move them. And so then you start getting into these setback requirements from housing. We don't have a thoroughfare in Victoria that doesn't have a house on it. Somewhere, you know, there are houses across from the mall. So when you start saying you can't develop commercially within so many feet of a residence, you gotta really think, think that one through. The, and again, the main thing I want to do is just encourage you to go slow. Remember, right now, 58 houses in a year? We, we gotta do better than that. And to do better than that, we're gonna have to come up with some options on the, on the development side. I represent, by the way, I learned about this about three weeks ago. And Julie was kind enough to help me do it. I went to her meeting when she discussed what was in it. And then again, had, had some concerns about some of this stuff. The, but when the, I represent people who own thousands of acres of land adjacent to the city in the ETJ, who would love to see it developed. Who would work with developers and we're working with some as we speak. But we got, we gotta make some adjustments to give them options, to do some things. And maybe to partner in some ways that make more sense because right now we, we, we got a housing problem. As far as resale of houses or available inventory of resale houses, it sticks to nothing. And that, that concerns me greatly. So thank y'all. And again, I don't see any, I don't, hope there's not an urgency to just rush this through. I hope all of you have read it at least twice. You need to read it twice. I've only read it once, I will tell you. But I plan to maybe do it again. The, but let's, let's go slow and maybe, maybe involve a few more people in, in the process. And some of the intricate things that are in here that, that do make a difference, that do make it difficult. And I know I hear this all the time about, well, that you can always come and ask for variance. A developer, a builder, somebody coming from out of town, that's the last thing they want to hear. Because they don't want to spend a bunch of money upfront and then have to come before you guys and get a variance. And it's just, it doesn't, it doesn't happen. I mean, so we can lose deals like that. All right, that's pretty much all I got. So thank y'all for your time and appreciate, appreciate your help.
Thank you, Mr. Swearingen. Is there anybody else wishing to speak to this matter? Mr. Johnston?
Good evening. Mayor Protem, members of council, thank you for letting me speak. I'm John Johnston. I work for this county of Victoria. I'm a county engineer. I have a couple of comments on the U D O. First of all, I'd like to compliment Julie and her staff on including a 10 acre exemption rather than the five acre. That was a real problematic thing for us in the county, in the ETJ area. Where the county's requirements, they could add an exemption if they were greater than 10 acres. But they could cross over the ETJ line and be under the city's development standards. And they had a five acre. So there was a little donut hole there of issues, subdivisions that got created with private roads that are problematic for, for my commissioners that, that are here. Some of them are here in the audience today. So I'm happy to see that 10 acre included. The next topic I'd like to speak to on this involves the, the animal services group. Mark Sloot is our animal services director. He comes to us from Austin, I believe. With some new ideas, some progressive ideas. One of the ideas he has is to relocate animal services into the city limits, within the city limits. Part of that issue is reuniting animals with their owners. It's very difficult when he picks them up and takes them out there. And, you know, you have to drive three or four miles to the animal shelter to, to reclaim. So having it inside the city limits would be beneficial for reuniting those animals with their owners. Plus 80% of his calls come within the city limits. So having his staff and his operation in the vicinity of where he services and provide, picks up animals and then reuniting. It makes it easier for volunteers to come and people to look for animals to adopt too, if it's in town and closer and convenient. So as I was reading this U D O, I came to the section of kennels. And it refers, let's see, that is. I had it all tabbed out here to make it easy and I'm struggling here. Okay, section 21 dash 141, commercial. And then it begins with kennels that they have to be separated 300 feet from property line to property line. Well, finding a location that is, the property line is 300 feet from the nearest residential property line would make it challenging to find a place. We do have a, a location that we are considering. And we believe it's a good place. I did start the commercial inspection only process last month. That gives us till the end of April for us to be under the current ordinance. Even if y'all adopt it, we still have until the end of April to secure permits and do the improvements. But there's some other challenges. This is an old warehouse that we're looking at. It's gonna take a lot of work with consultants to develop the plans, submit the architectural drawings, get the permits going. I don't think once we start the permit within this window that we can continue that. I don't think that's gonna be a prohibitive thing for us to do. But it's the availability of those consultants to get this vision that Mark has to modernize the animal services group with an enclosed shelter, enclosed. But the definition in the U D O is a very broad definition. It, as I mentioned, 21 dash 141 talks about the separation, but when you look at the definition, it says a facilities to house dogs, cats or other household pets. And/or where grooming, breeding, boarding, training, adopting, selling animals is conducted. So that's the definition of kennels, which could be expanded to an animal shelter interpretation by staff that would put us at the 300 foot separation from property line. Of the use to the next property line of the residential. When I was reviewing the animal and fowl ordinance that y'all adopted in November 2nd, 2021, there's a definition for animal shelter. And then there's also a definition of kennel. So the animal shelter is a facility operated by humane society or municipal or other governmental agency for the purposes agency for the purposes of impounding or caring for animals held under the authority of this chapter or state law. So the uniqueness of animal services is it is a service, is governmental service provided to the community. We have this master contract with the city where you engage with the county to provide those services in that master contract. So animal services, even though he's under the direction of the commissioner's court, they are, he does service and provide it under our contract with the city to provide those services. the current version, I think that's before you, also allows some stipulations in the, the kennel use. It said, you know, "The 300-foot distance requirement shall not apply if a kennel is abutting a railroad right-of-way. Outside runs of a kennel shall be operated only with an attendant present. Minimum animals shall be enclosed with six-foot fence." And I thought the first one, okay. It's wholly contained building. In our particular proposal, this will be a wholly contained building, all the kennels. There will be no outside runs. We do plan to have an outside exercise area, but the problem that I see in the way this is currently written is it doesn't acknowledge animal shelters that Chapter 4 does. It does not include animal shelters in the UDO as a accommodation for that government service of animal control services. So I would respectfully encourage y'all to add that accommodation to allow the animal control services to operate, whether they go into the location that we currently have planned or locate some other way as the interest in adopting animals and Mark's service may want another location in our town that's more centrally located. Just don't want it to be left up to an interpretation of a staff person if we don't have it nailed down in the ordinance to allow animal services to do their business and serve our citizens and serve the animals. So.
I want to clarify that. So the issue isn't as much what the provisions say, it's what the definition of a kennel is?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. So you're okay with, I mean, these provisions are good. You're just asking for a carve-out, a carve-out for...
I wouldn't say a carve-out. That's kind of a, you know, the government's getting a benefit that nobody else gets.
That's why I'm asking the question.
Okay. It's more of an accommodation for the services that the county provides in a location that's convenient for residents to come in and reclaim their animals, and also for people that want to adopt animals, more convenient so that we, we don't have to move to that termination if we can put them with other families.
Gotcha. Good. Thank you.
I'm trying to figure out, the, the purpose of this is because there's noise associated with, with the animals. And I haven't heard anything that in any way dissuades that. I mean, I understand, I guess you, they would be housed in a building, but you've still got that open run. They have to, to be out.
Well, the, the current version of this ordinance that's before you does say that it can be with, attended, they can do the run, and they're typically, Mark can speak to the actual operation, and the, I don't think you have the disruption of sound with the kennel fully enclosed and all the dogs housed there. They go out a few at a time with an attendant. It's no different than playing with your dog in the backyard is the type of concept that an outdoor run with an attendant.
Okay, but, so what you're proposing would not, the kennels would not be wholly within a building, then?
No, that, we do plan, that's the modernization and, and strategies that Mark has brought to this community, that the kennels are now wholly housed. They don't have free run outside. They are with an attendant, a few at a time, so that they can control that.
Okay, then I'm, I'm not seeing why this is a problem.
It's the separation, it's the 300-foot separation for the use and the definition of the kennel versus the definition of animal shelter for the governmental services of that activity that they have to provide. It's a limiting factor to allow them to set up and operate inside the community.
Thank you.
I guess the first thing I would look at, it's under commercial. This is a governmental process. Is this truly commercial? It's... I'll look to the lawyers.
I'll look to the staff.
I'm looking. Don't take my mic, take his mic.
So I think in like, Chapter 2 of the City of Ordinances, there is a provision that applies to all ordinances that, that headings aren't the rules, but it is hard, you know, really, commercial is to make it easier for, like Chance was saying, those out-of-town developers, but really, it's, it's non-residential. You know, the code is really residential versus non-residential type things. But instead of a non-residential heading, to make it easier for people to, developers, when they're wanting to develop, you know, we, we put the term "commercial," but really titles don't actually convey any code. If you read that in that, I think it's our Chapter 2, General Provision section, that says titles don't mean anything. It's a, it's an easy way to organize and structure the ordinance so people can find things.
Couldn't, could the county always ask for a variance?
So I actually had that same question, Julie. Because I know that we added the waiver process.
Yes.
Would this be an instance where, in lieu of a variance, it would be the waiver process to get the people within 300 feet to sign off on it?
Yes.
Or is it either-or? Meaning, it's either that or variance?
Sign a waiver. If the waiver, if, if the waiver can't be secured, or they don't want to try to secure waivers, then they could apply for a variance. And this was discussed at Planning Commission, like you mentioned earlier, too. And that was Planning Commission's sort of sentiment was, we did build in a relief avenue in the code. There are, there is the waiver process plus variance, either or.
Would that variance be good forever?
It's however council wanted to grant it, so you could place conditions that it's just for, you know, the, the county, and it doesn't run with the land. I mean, you know, yes, it could be forever.
I mean, not only is y'all to come back every year, ask for variance just because they need to stay at the building or whatever.
No, I wouldn't recommend that. I mean, I think if you wanted to grant it for the county, I would put it to the variance to run with the land with the county, as long as they held it. But that would completely be up at council's discretion at that time.
One thing I'll, I'll point out, and Mr. Johnston talked about the animal control ordinance, so looking at that, it looks like to me that the definition that we assigned in that ordinance, the kennel, contemplated more of, when you're talking about boarding and that sort of thing, more of a for-profit enterprise. Because it says engages in the business of, and so it, it makes sense that we, we probably need to look at that as compared to this and make sure we're consistent when we use that term, you know, in those definitions.
And I think you're correct. I think that when that, when that definition was created, it was more of a for-profit. For example, the, the main street that has the, the kennels that are the boarding, the boarding and that sort of thing, not...
Pet resort.
Yeah, the pet resort, thank you. Not necessarily the outside kennels outside. It was meant for that sort of business, so we can certainly look into making sure that those are...
And my understanding, y'all correct me wrong, because I was not involved in the drafting or in that ordinance at all, but that was, there was a lot of, about operations and, and just dogs in general. For the purpose of the UDO, we were looking at land use and how land uses impact other land uses in this instance. So it was a very narrow look, land use section of our ordinance.
I, I would say, and, and we can bring this up or talk about it more on Friday, but let's compare those two before that and make sure we're consistent in how we're applying that term. I think that would make sense.
Absolutely. We can, we can work on that before Friday. Yes, sir.
Great, thank you.
And I think what we'll need from council, more specifically, is obviously, yes, there's some good comments, feedback here on ensuring that verbiage be consistent across these, these ordinances, but I believe the intent behind suggesting that we break up the definition of the UDA, the UDO, to create two different definitions, like we have in the animal ordinances, to have one not include the 300-foot distance requirement to residential. And so we would need that specific direction from council on whether you want to have the section of shelter that would fit the animal care services facility and not have the 300-foot buffer applied to that and yes to the other, or no to both, or yes to both. Because I think the intent, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but the intent is to clarify the definitions to be consistent, but not have the 300-foot buffer apply to shelter so that they can take however much time they need to have the project play out and not have to worry about.
That was a suggestion that, in bullet number two, that the 300-foot distance requirement shall not apply if the kennel is abutting a railroad right-of-way or a facility operated by humane society or municipal or other governmental agency for the purposes of impounding caring for animals held under the authority of Chapter 4 or state law. So that, that was a...
How many feet would your, would your facility then be from the, if it's, if you need the 300-foot variance, how many feet is it going to be?
The, currently, it meets the current ordinance, which is 100-foot building. The building is 100 foot from the nearest resident.
So instead of 300, it's 100?
It's gonna, well, if you use property line, we'll probably be about 50 feet from the residential, if you use property line to property line.
Which is the way that the UDO is drafted, right? So something for council to think about, and we can discuss more on Friday, for sure.
So would it be correct, or could we table tonight's vote until we do our workshop on Friday and then just move all our readings down one?
That's a great question for Dr. Young, because I know he's prepared to address that process.
It's a great question. I had that same thought. Thinking through that, and the, we've, we've done things a little bit different here. I think we've kind of gone back to a more traditional, where there are a total of three readings. Tonight's isn't, certainly, we can vote on this, and yes, we're voting on this, knowing full well that we are going to sit and further discuss this on Friday, and then we will have another chance to discuss, and yet another chance to discuss. And so voting yes is really just, you can vote yes because you like this document, or you can vote yes that there are parts of this I, I like, and I want to continue to move this down the road, knowing full well that this may not be the final document itself. So there are two ways to truly approach this. You can table it and just push that timeline back, or we can vote, and that timeline is still there, however, this document may be changed by that time.
Right. So if we, so if we split...
Because we separated out the second and third readings.
Right. So if the intent is to split the second and third reading, which, you know, yeah, Mayor Bocknight verbalized that, you know, last time, we would have the first reading, you know, tonight, and in theory, let's say you approve the first reading tonight, it gets discussed on Friday, we make changes based off the discussion on Friday for the second reading, which would take place at the second meeting in December, and then there'd be another opportunity to make further changes before the third reading, which wouldn't happen till January.
All along this way, there's still an exit clause, that if you want out and say, I'm not, I'm not for this, I want to table this, you can bring it up at any time.
At the second and third reading?
At the second and third reading. You can...
Yeah, so, so you could, for example, if the second reading, just in theory, if the second reading, if tonight, first reading gets approved, we make changes, and the second reading gets approved at the second meeting in December, we don't have to bring back the third reading at the first meeting in January. Everybody can say, you know what, because of the holidays, as an example, maybe you want another discussion point, you know, at the first meeting in Janu, excuse me, in January, and then have the third reading at the second meeting in January, right? So there's definitely options here for council, and it's all your prerogative. If you choose to table the whole thing, obviously, that's your prerogative as well. But I think our intent and our recommendation, and what Dr. Young is suggesting, is that we are recommending approval of the first reading tonight to get the ball rolling with it, and simply along the way, make the changes that need to be made. One of the things that I do want to ask Julie and Chance to, to, to better present on Friday is that I don't want council to think that there hasn't been involvement from stakeholders or Planning Commission throughout this whole process and think that somehow this is simply staff unilaterally putting this thing together. That hasn't been the case. While I recognize that perhaps, you know, Mr. Keeling, I'm sorry, Mr. Swearingen hasn't, hasn't been maybe specifically included or invited, there have been other individuals that have been invited, you know, representing different development groups and others that have been involved throughout the way. So we have been intentional in trying to receive input from different folks representing different interest areas throughout the process, and we have heavily leaned on the Planning Commission, since ultimately, they're the ones, and, you know, Councilwoman Scott can attest to the role that the Planning Commission plays, you know, in planning processes. So there has been a lot of reviewing of this document and input opportunities along the way. And I think on Friday, I think we can probably do a better job of outlining that timeline so that hopefully that helps reassure you somewhat that there has been this long process. And I concede that we probably haven't done a good job tonight, nor the most recent time that Chance presented at a workshop in conveying that timeline. And that might help, but I certainly think that there are changes that will be made coming from direction that we'll get on Friday and otherwise, right? I mean, I know we've already gone back and forth a little bit with, with what the county brought up, and not so much with what Mr. Swearingen brought up, but I think those things are things that we can hammer out, you know, on Friday.
One thing that, that you, you guys were asking for, you know, tell us what to be ready for on Friday, one thing I'd like to hear about, if it exists, is we know the sidewalk issue, and we know the parkland dedication issue, were there, were there other issues that were brought out in these meetings?
You can answer that right now.
Yeah, that were addressed, not addressed, or were there changes made based on that? I just kind of get a sense of that.
Well, and I think I covered most of them all at the last meeting. The, in the beginning, we had heard from kind of the Builders Association rep, had a lot of concerns about the commercial general liability insurance, although at, so all the subsequent meetings, you know, with the Builders Association, and Rick actually just had a meeting on the NEC with the Construction Board of Appeals last night, and surprisingly, all of the existing contractors that carry that insurance are very supportive of that provision, are like, no. So that's definitely not a concern anymore. Billboards, or requests to prohibit billboards because of the problems that they cause in the future, and then as well, the fact that if we do not prohibit them, we are not eligible to be part of Scenic City, the Scenic City program, as long as we do allow them in our city, so that is another reason to prohibit billboards. The separation requirements. Now, the separation requirements are not for all commercial land uses, so, you know, office, retail, it's really limited to heavy commercial, or heavy industrial and like automotive uses and things that are generally in conflict, being next to residences, like unfortunately, kennels and barking dogs. So it's just, there's a list of about a dozen of those land uses that have the separation requirements.
And I think we need to go through that detail on Friday so that council's reminded on specifically which uses are the ones that have that buffer versus not.
And not all of them have a 300-foot buffer. Those buffers also are, some are, are 100 feet, and, you know, for example, Navarre right-of-way, I think, is 120 feet, so even across the street, you would, it would be fine. And that really came from the public input session. A, a good example is a, a national chain that backs up a... input session. A good example is a, a national chain that backs up against a well-established neighborhood that we received a lot of complaints on. So that's really why those rules, that part was written. Billboards, land use, and then sidewalks and parkland. And that's, that was it. Like I said, there's a lot of good things. I think Chance hit on it. Right now, we have the rule about deed approval, that if a lot was in that configuration before we first adopted our very first subdivision ordinance in 1956, then, then that's a deed approval and people don't have to plat. But there was a lot of subdivision of land that happened after that with by meets and bounds. And so when people come in to put a manufactured home or get a building permit for an addition over 25%, we tell those people, oh, you have to plat, even though they do have a water line, a sewer line, public right-of-way all in front of them. And now this ordinance requires just a survey. That's a cost difference of several thousand dollars. So that really, there's a lot of little things in there that really help your kind of average job. And the big commercial type rules are substantially very similar to what we have now with some relaxation in the parking rules, like you said, or some, it's a little bit stricter on the type of trees, like we're not counting Craig Myrtles as trees anymore. So there's some real minor tweaks throughout the rest of it. But holistically, it's very, very, very similar to what we're doing now.
And another example of an existing condition that does present some challenges, and I certainly don't mind, you know, using this company as an example by name, but is Texas Concrete, right? You know, that separation requirement would prevent, you know, another situation of having a business like Texas Concrete right across the street from residential, from residences. And we're all too familiar with the challenges that that presents itself to the people that live right across the street. And so having that separation for those type of uses and uses like that, you know, are intended to be in the best interest of the residents, similar to the one with the animal shelter, right? I mean, at some point, I hope the county's going to ask the question, well, what do the people that live around here think about this site, right? And regardless of what gets decided with this ordinance, you know, I hope, and I'm sure they will, you know, we'll go through that process, right? But at the end of the day, that's what's driving this, right? It's not an attempt to limit development. It's an attempt to help take the perspective of the person that lives and might live next door or across the street, taking that person's experience into account. We hear it all the time with people feeling concerned with noise, right, in proximity to that. Well, that can't really be addressed, you know, through something like this, but we know based off the feedback we get through citizens' communication that there are situations where people live in proximity to businesses that create issues. So we're trying to fix what we can without, without going the full extent, you know, of zoning.
And, and to speak to single-family residential development, the changes actually, I feel like are better because we reduced our minimum lot size. So if we have large acreage where people want to develop a 500,000-lot residential subdivision, the two main changes are, we reduce the minimum lot size so they can be more dense. And if it's outside of the city limits and they're requesting city utilities, they have to also request annexation. And a lot of that is because of the state law changes to annexation. But otherwise, it's, business is normal. There's, like I said, like Chance said, there's some changes in the procedure stuff that is because of state law that was recently passed. And but we're following state law. We're still have the fastest turnaround time for plats, 30 days. That actually, I think holistically, if you look at the changes, it's actually a lot better for residential because we did reduce our minimum lot size by 1,000 square feet.
Ms. Scott did remind me, and I will close public comments and hearing at this time, so before we move on. Thank you.
Can I make a suggestion that's something that could be considered that's not in this ordinance?
And that is, one of, one of the things, okay, one of the things we're doing now is we're creating a lot of detention, retention, whatever. I don't know the difference between the two. That's the engineers. But we, if we could somehow, and I don't know how, a lot of these detention ponds that we're doing are just health hazards. They're mosquito pits, they're, they hold water when it rains. And I think if there's some way we could better manage those, and that's not addressed in your deal, and I don't know how you do it. I know at Disney World, there are no mosquitoes. So...
All I heard is we need a Disney World. That's what I heard.
Unfortunately, I think the, the Chapter 14, our nuisances, is really how we have to deal with those unless we can figure out, the engineers can figure out a way to do more regional detention or something.
Mr. Zock, did you have a, a comment? I was late to close it, so I will invite you up.
Thank you. Public hearing, I appreciate the public hearing. As far as dog walking, yes. I happen to be, I have two houses within 110 feet of the concrete building and not necessarily the parking lot. There isn't, besides, within that 300-foot proposed area, there's at least another 20 other houses besides my two on Oliver. When the previous owner was there, the area did hear a lot of cars honking and, and everything. If you're looking at having a 300-foot barrier, you make it for yourself, not, not exempt yourself from your own rules. And if you're, and I do agree with having the, moving the dog kennel over there to the Oliver area, the Prophet Drive we may call it. But if you're going to have a rules, the city of Victoria needs to stick by its own rules and follows its own rules. Being a fiscal conservative, it's a great idea, great location. But there are a lot of people that live around your new dog kennel that are going to be impacted and probably have not heard that the howling of the dogs yet. Thank you.
I'll remind you that it's not the city's dog kennel, but the county's.
Please remind them.
Okay, at this time, I will close public comments. Is there any more from up on the dais?
No. I move, we adopt C1.
I have a motion. Do you have a second?
A second.
All right. Motion and second. At this time, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Item C1 passes.
Yeah, first reading passes first, just to be clear.
First reading. I will move on to the consent agenda.
Dr. Young, I do want to, I forgot to do this earlier, I do want to staff pool item F8.
D.
I'm sorry, D8. Thank you for paying attention.
Item D1 is the adoption amendments of the regular meeting on November 21st, 2023. Item D2 is an ordinance admitting the 2023-2024 budget of the city of Victoria and caring forward encumbrances outstanding at September 30th, 2023. This item is on second and third reading. Item D3 is a resolution approving the purchase of parts of sedimentation basin equipment at the surface water treatment plant from Environmental Improvements Incorporated in the amount of $117,306.33. Item D4 is a resolution approving an advanced funding agreement with Tech Stop for the installation of sidewalks and curb ramps on John Stockton Power Drive between Loop 463 and Salem Drive or FM 1315. Item D5 is a resolution approving a purchase of filter media and under drains from the surface, for the surface water treatment plant from Exlem Water Solutions USA Incorporated for the amount of $158,000. Item D6 is a resolution approving the purchase of two bulk storage tanks from the, for the surface water treatment plant from Environmental Improvements Incorporated in the amount of $92,070.86. And item D7 is a resolution approving the third contract renewal for the mowing of Loop 463 with Andrew Rodriguez, D B A A J shredding in the amount not to exceed $56,000.
Do you have a motion? A motion and second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Consent agenda passes as read. Item D8.
Item D8 is a resolution approving a professional services agreement with Command Commissioning LLC for commissioning services at the public safety headquarters in the amount not to exceed $164,738.
Good evening, Mr. Farrell.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilor, Mayor Protim and Council. Thank you for giving me a little bit of time to, to talk through this. There were, commissioning is sort of a, a new thing for some of our projects, and it's kind of new to me as well. So I felt like this might be a good time to give you just a little bit of explanation for why we felt this was a necessary component on the public safety headquarters. In addition, we do have Fernando Perez and Ken Millain, and Sean Green is here. So Fernando and Ken are on Zoom, available for questions, but Sean Green with Command Commissioning is, is here as well, so we'll give him a moment. But what I wanted to spell it real quickly is that the commissioning part of the building, this is important because, you know, we've talked about our project team before, where we have the owner's rep representing our interest. We have the construction manager in Spoglass, who actually do the building, and we've had the architects with F G M A and R M A doing the design. Command Commissioning will be completely independent of any of those groups. They're going to come in and they're going to test some things. Some of their tests are required under our current energy code that have to be done regardless of how we do it, right? But they're going to test our systems, our HVAC systems, our M E P systems, they're going to test our fire alarms, our elevators, they're going to test the building envelope in certain areas to make sure windows don't leak and that we don't have problems with the exterior or the interior. They're going to find those things that we might have found after we moved in, right? So they're a value-added service on this piece because they will prevent us from future problems down the road, but also help us comply with some of the energy code requirements on the project. So before I bring up Mr. Green and then open up for Mr. Perez and, and Mr. Millain, do you have any questions for me on that?
So is this in addition to other testing that the contractor would typically do? This is just kind of a second phase of that or a redo at it?
Sort of. So it is in addition to the contract, Spoglass has a quality assurance team member. They have a couple of quality assurance team members that are checking. Our owner's rep will have people onsite monitoring the progress and making sure that we're following plans and doing things. So there are those measures, but this is also budgeted already in our soft cost on our initial budget that we've given you. So when we come back for the G M P, this will already be included in that. This is just a separate award. So, yes, it's separate in that it's additional testing, but it is included in the price.
Why do you have to have additional testing?
For us, it's good because it provides that independent analysis. We've got some projects that we've done in the past that haven't had commissioning or haven't had additional testing, where we ended up having to come back and fix problems later that may have been caught sooner. Again, like I said, it's things that we would have caught if we were occupying the space. But this is, this is just an extra quality control item for us. In addition to the required, you know, if we don't do this, there are still some components someone will have to be brought in as a subcontractor for Spoglass probably to do the energy code commissioning pieces. So we'll get that done, but then we'll also get the extra security.
And we can always have Sean expand on that, make his drive worth it.
Mayor Protim, Council, thank you all for having me.
Good evening.
Can you all hear me? Sean Green, I'm the regional manager with Command Commissioning. We're locally based here in Texas. I'm out of Houston, oversee the Gulf Coast region. Fernando Perez is my counterpart in Austin, he's on the line. And then Kim Millain is the owner of the company and he's out of Irving. We're headquartered out of Irving. So Derek did a really good job of explaining what commissioning is. We are, Command Commissioning is, is a, is a third-party commissioning firm. That's all we do is commissioning. So we don't, we, we have professional engineers that work for us. We've got PhDs that work for us. We've got a lot of, of experience that was field-grown experience, technicians in various trades that we've, we've recruited that, that bring just a tremendous amount of expertise to any construction project that we're involved in. Times like this is, is, is the most ideal time to get a commissioning agent engaged in a project because we provide design phase services that are looking for gaps in the actual project's design as it relates to the systems that are included in our scope of work. So mechanical, electrical, plumbing systems, building envelope, we're, we're looking at details, making sure that the systems at the end of the day can be commissioned. So when we show up prior to the owner's acceptance, that there aren't any surprises. So when we're able to catch that in the design phase, which is where we're at right now in the project, we can get a better bid out of the contractors. I say we, y'all can get a better bid out of the contractors. And it just, it helps, it helps to ensure that there's no change orders after the fact. Another great value add, I think, to having a commissioning agent onboard. Sort of to what Derek said, very, we go very hand-in-hand with Q A, Q C, it kind of one and the same. But what we do different from mechanical engineers' Q C is we're also filling the gaps between the mechanical engineer and the electrical engineer. The electrical engineer has, you know, intent in his design that a controls contractor who falls under the mechanical engineer is supposed to be picking up as well. Sometimes those, those, those items get missed, there's gaps there. So we're looking to fill those gaps where other, you know, experts may just kind of have the blinders on, tunnel vision. They're, they're standing in their lane. So we kind of cross all lanes.
And one, you know, I was hoping one of you had mentioned this, but you know, in real life, what this looks like is, you know, part of this commission ensures that the systems work the way they're supposed to when, when they're supposed to, right? So for example, the fire alarm goes off, right? Are certain systems shutting off as they should? Are other systems turning on as they should? You know, are certain lights that are supposed to stay on when the fire alarm goes off, stay on, right? You know, those things that, you know, to his point, you know, the electrical may not, you know, be on the same page with mechanical. And so this commissioning isn't just ensuring that the work gets done right, but it's ensuring that the systems are responding. We don't want to know that, you know, systems aren't working right during a fire alarm, you know, when a real fire is going on, right? And I know that Mayor Bachnight wished he'd be here for this conversation because in his line of work, you know, they're very accustomed to this type of work, especially for projects of this size. And he, and I'm sure, I think he called a couple of you that he was aware had questions to discuss it as well.
Yeah, Mr. Lofgren, I was going to mention that I did speak to Mayor Bachnight because I had the same questions in regards, but this is not my line of work either, and knew that I might as well ask, ask somebody who is more in tune with that line of work. And he said that this is certainly normal for a project of, of this magnitude. I don't think we've ever undertaken anything like this in the city. So I felt a lot more comfortable with that answer, seeing as it's outside the scope of my practice.
Well, I spoke to him also, and what was helpful to me, this is a public safety building headquarters, Command Commissioning. It sounded to me like it was something military or something related to. And he explained to me that, no, same thing. It's, it's just coincidence of the name, I suppose.
Yes, ma'am, that's just a coincidence.
But that was my question is, why do we have to have the building commissioned? But not, not at all that. So I understand it much better. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question. What sort of warranties do y'all offer as far as your workmanship? And if something was to happen, who would come out and fix it?
So, so we're not actually providing a, a product, so to speak, so we don't have a warranty. But what we do as part of our service is ensure that the project manual, the specifications that'll outline the warranty requirements for all of your subs, we ensure that those warranties are being met. The, we, we provide, and I'm fairly certain it's in this proposal as well, we do provide a 10-month warranty walkthrough where, but the intent of that, it's not us warranting our service, it's, it's to go through 10 months after y'all have occupied the facility, get with whoever the facility manager is or whomever the, the local person of authority would be to, to sort of identify, hey, we have problems over here, you know, this, this person over here is always hot, they're always cold. We try to identify warranty items that can, that can get addressed by the contractor while it's still under warranty, so y'all aren't having to pay for it after the warranty expires.
And ultimately, if something does need to be fixed or changed or whatever, that would fall on Spoglass as a general contractor to ensure that it gets done right. And so they would work hand-in-hand. You will hear directly from Spoglass at our next regular council meeting. That's when we do plan on bringing, we moved it? All right. You may or may not hear from Spoglass at the second meeting in December, but you will hear from them soon when we bring back the amendment of their contract to include the G M P, which is the guaranteed maximum price. And that would be a really great opportunity to engage directly with the general contractor.
And that would be a really great opportunity to engage directly with the general contractor and learn about, you know, their warranties and their processes for quality control and quality assurance to, to better understand their role in it.
But you will come out, say, a year from now or just, you know, from when the project ends?
Yes, ma'am, yeah. Yeah, so within, within 10 months of, of the, the owner's acceptance. So when, when y'all take the keys, when y'all move into the facility and y'all start using it, that's usually when the contractors would, you know, if you had an issue, they would say, oh, well, that's warranty or it's, it's construction. So 10 months from that time is when we would return to the site. We, we usually perform an interview with the facilities folks, the, the maintenance folks to get an understanding of what issues they've been running into. We, we maintain a, what we call a commissioning issues log throughout the entire project. So anything we find in design, submittal review during testing goes in that log. And so during that warranty period, if there's anything that was left open, that was, you know, a minor issue, but one that wouldn't prevent y'all from taking ownership of the facility, we try to review those then as, to, to ensure that they were addressed. We also review issues that we had already discovered and closed and made sure that they did not, you know, reoccur. Yeah, that, that answer your question, ma'am?
Sean, may I add a little bit?
Yeah, go ahead, Fernando.
Hello, thank, thank you all for having me to speak here and just be a voice on the microphone. So, so to the points here about warranty and, and those kinds of guarantees and provisions, I wanted to emphasize that the commissioning, the third party commissioning firm, we truly act as an owner's representative in this process. And what we are able to do is to establish commissioning specifications through the design phase, as well as develop a comprehensive commissioning plan that identifies the key roles and responsibilities for the project delivery team members who will carry the building from design through construction and then occupancy and acceptance. What we implement are key milestones that have to occur and those act as gates that, that will serve to drive the performance and quality of the construction as we move through that acceptance process. We implement what is called a functional performance testing process that will essentially go through the sequence of operations for all of the systems and equipment within the facility to verify that they are operating in accordance with your owner's project requirements and the original design intent. So the commissioning agent here, in this case ourselves, what we're going to do is provide deliverable documentation that sets a, a procedural, methodical process for commissioning systems and equipment prior to occupancy of the facility. And more, you know, furthermore, by developing a commissioning issues log and tracking issues that are identified through the testing, functional performance testing process, we're able to then provide the project delivery team, Derek and his team, AGCM and their team with ammo and, and, and a log and history of issues that can then be provided to Spoglass for resolution and verification after the fact.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I just want to clarify real quick, the answer to what Jesus was mentioning about when you hear from Spoglass. So in late November, right before Thanksgiving, the week of Thanksgiving, they received all their submissions from their subcontractors. Then they've taken those and compiled those into what their estimate is for the project. At the same time, our estimators from AGCM, our owner's rep, they have been doing their own due diligence and making an estimate separately from Spoglass. Next week, later this week and next week, those two groups are going to get together and start comparing notes on the entire 70,000 square foot building, on every penny and every dollar spent on that deal and making sure that what shakes out is a really good price, that we're getting the best value for that. We hope that that all has to happen now, that we hope that that all happens before next Tuesday, right? So that I can get everything written and done and we can get the contract amendment signed and on the agenda by Friday when the agenda gets posted. If there's a gap, if there's more conversation needed, if there's some back and more forth, more back and forth, then it'll be January 2nd. So we just have to, with the holidays, kind of gauge in there in the middle. So that's the reason you may hear from them December 19th, you may hear from them January 2nd, but it's just a matter of how close or, or how many things need to be hashed out on the, on those two estimates.
Thank you. Are there any other questions?
I'll move for approval of item D8.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of D8, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. D8 passes. Thank you for making the drive in and the information. Appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thank you all for your time.
Moving on to action items.
Item E1 is a resolution authorizing the posting and publication of notice of intention to issue certificates of obligation in the maximum principal amount of $59 million for various capital improvements, including public safety facilities and street sidewalk and drainage improvements.
Well, good evening, Mayor Protim and council. The item tonight would authorize staff to publish and advertise our notice of intent to issue bonds. That'll go in the newspaper on our website. The amount is not to exceed $59 million in principal and will be used for various projects that were in the fiscal 24 CIP. That include public safety headquarters as well as some street reconstruction projects. With us tonight is our financial advisor, Dusty Trailer. He's with RBC Capital Markets and he's going to provide some information on the city's outstanding debt as well as current market conditions.
Very good. Thank you, thank you, Wesley.
Mr. Trailer, good evening.
Good evening, good to see everybody.
Good to see you.
Yeah. As, as Wesley indicated, the item before you tonight is to approve a notice of intent to issue certificates of obligation that would be issued to fund the public safe, public safety facility as well as street improvement. This, so really this is just sort of a kickoff item as you guys move towards the actual issuance of those COs. You are not, you are not issuing those certificates of obligation tonight. You are just simply starting the process that begins o'clock and we will begin working towards the issuance, which is planning to, to occur in early February 2024. So as we get started, I do have a quick presentation on the city's outstanding debt profile and the GO debt and wanted to go through that with you. So if you'll look with me here on page number two, what we've got is just a quick, brief overview of the city's outstanding bonds. The city currently has nine different issues outstanding for a total of $37.49 million in principal amount of bonds. You actually notice that that is quite a significant reduction of what the original issued amount of those bonds was. You have been paying down that principal quite dramatically over the course of, of the past several years. The other thing I want to point out to you, if you'll look at the graphs down at the bottom of the page, what those graphs depict are the city's annual debt service payments on just the currently outstanding debt obligations. And so you will notice there that in, in the most recent fiscal year that we just wrapped up, 2023, our annual debt service payments were approximately $10 million per year. And now we are going to be dropping to debt service payments that are right around $6.5 million per year. That decrease in annual debt service requirements really goes a long ways towards us being able to slide in the debt service on this public facilities, public safety facility and street improvements without having to experience an increase in the INS tax rate to support it. So you're well positioned to handle this, this debt obligation. And then, and then you'll notice on the next page, you'll notice on the next page, we just provide a 10 year history of the tax rate to the city of Victoria. And what I really want to point out to you guys and give you kudos for is that over the course of the past four years, we have seen a, a material decrease in the tax rate here for the city, including a decrease in the portion of the tax rate that is dedicated to pay INS or to pay debt service. That's the INS portion. In this most recent year, that INS rate was set at a 19.03 cent rate. That is a decrease from the prior year of 21.27. And then what we've got on this next page is just our preliminary timetable of events. Just kind of hit a few of the key items here tonight. You're approving that notice of intent to issue. That notice of intent has got to be published for a period of at least 45 days. We're expecting publication of the notice here later this week. It is that first publication date that really starts the 45 day clock. And then from that point forward, we will be working closely with your staff to prepare the preliminary offering documents, visit with the rating agencies, and then being prepared to be in the bond market on February 6th, 2024, to actually sell the COs and lock in the interest rate on those obligations at that point. And then on the pages that follow here, we just got a, we just have a current market review, an overview of the bond market. I think it's important for us to point out, if you'll go to the very last, the very last slide, what this does is this slide looks at interest rates from the MMD. MMD is the yield curve off of which municipal bonds are priced every single day. You'll look at that call out box to the far right and what you see there is municipal bond rates really ticking up pretty consistently over the course of this calendar year, the 2023 calendar year, until about seven weeks ago, right around October the 15th, October 18th, 2023, we have seen bond rates actually start to trend back down. So we're fingers crossed that that trend will continue. When we were developing the debt service estimates for these particular COs, we were, of course, using higher estimates of interest rates. So this could find us being able to, to bring the debt service in a lot lower than what we'd originally anticipated if the trend continues.
Fingers crossed.
Fingers crossed, okay? So that's really the heart of my presentation this evening. I know that we will be, again, working closely with staff as your team always does a great job in this issuance process, getting ready to go out to the market in early February. Any questions?
I'll just briefly, I'll just briefly add that if you're wondering, okay, if we have this issuance, what does that mean to our debt capacity moving forward? That is the very first item on the agenda for our Friday workshop. And so you'll hear directly from Gilbert, I don't know if you'll be here.
I cannot be there.
Yeah, what? Yeah, are you? Yeah, I'll do it, whatever. You'll hear from somebody.
Yeah.
Talking about debt capacity. Because again, as Dusty suggested, we obviously are beginning to pay off some of that. We've been talking about that for years. That creates this capacity for the big CIP that we have. But that also then begs the question, what is that, how does that look like then moving forward? And so we'll provide that picture to you on Friday so that as we develop the new CIP, looking at those outer years, we can start filling it in.
And not to step on anyone's toes at all, but if you can look at the, the graph there and you can see continual step downs in the outs, in the outstanding debt service payments, where there should be quite a bit of capacity for capital improvement plan.
What I'm interested in is to see what, when we do this bond issue, what the debt service will be for '24, '25, '26.
You'll see the estimate on Friday.
Thank you.
Yeah. From somebody.
So bring this for comparison.
Very good. Thank you for the information, Mr. Trailer.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate you guys.
I move we adopt E1?
We have a.
A second.
Second. We have a motion and second. All those in favor of E1?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Item E1 passes.
Thank you, Mr. Bond.
All right. Yeah, Mr. Bond. You know, I was hoping to congratulate you and your brother today, but you know, that's conversation for another day. All right, so we're moving on to city managers' reports. As, as I've mentioned, at a recent meeting, we're beginning to do annual reports sooner this year because we do have some departments that focus around your reports on fiscal years. And because of what I just alluded to, you know, talking about debt capacity on Friday, I do envision a busy spring in our council meetings as we look to develop that new CIP for fiscal year '25 that'll, for the first time in a few years, add some years to the CIP. And so tonight, we kick that off with library and our communications department. And I will turn it over to Jessica to start us off with the library annual report.
Good evening, Mayor Protim and council members. I was told there was a prize for the first department to give their annual report, so I'm, I'm looking forward to that.
Congratulations.
Peanut butter crackers?
You can do better. I want to start off by just talking about the newly adopted library's master plan. With, with the information and the data that we got from the plan, we got to work in updating a lot of just the things that we do. Since 2011, our, our tagline was Victoria Public Library, where the journey begins. Now it's Victoria Public Library, Imagine, Discover, Connect. What does that mean for us? Oops, sorry. That means the Victoria Public Library is a place where learners and creators come together to imagine the future, discover new possibilities and connect with others who share their passions. You'll see that in a lot of our marketing, our new library card designs and hopefully incorporate, incorporated in some of the images that we have coming out on social media, things like that. So also that data, we were able to collect, where, where are we going from here? I talked about it in our annual report last year that we were wrapping up our strategic plan. And strategic plan is our five year plan. We do have a master plan that's long range, but what are we going to do for the next five years that are going to get us there? So the goals that we've identified from the master plan are, let's see, inspire personal development, improve technology and access, foster community awareness and support, and serve as a community anchor. So I have some examples of what that means and how we've started already that process. Improve technology and access. As you all know, we received the grant from the Texas State Library and Archives Commission for a anytime pickup locker. As you can see in the picture to the right, that is half of our locker. As you all know, some projects don't go as planned, so we are looking forward to the other half of the locker to be delivered very soon and then be on the lookout for some communication when we finally say it's in use, we are, it's out here. So again, this is just half the locker and we look forward to starting that project. We also got a electronic magnifier. We have that in the genealogy room. You'd be surprised how many times somebody comes and asks us for our handheld magnifier, magnifying glasses at the service desk. So now we have a desktop and we have staff on hand to help our patrons use that.
Hannah's right there. Were you talking about him?
Foster community awareness and support. In September, we had our very first show your library card discount program. In seven days, seven days before September 1st, my programming team said, we should ask businesses, local businesses, if they would like to do this. They recruited 39 businesses in seven days to offer a discount if you show your library card. We had so much community feedback, just excited about it because they were able to go to businesses they've never been before and it, it was just a fun project. We had people reach out to us during the month of September and after saying, we want to be included in next year's program. So the, I, I just wanted to briefly highlight that during this time, the 39 businesses were included and we had 373 new applications that month and 263 renewals. And a lot of them said it was because of this program. This happened very recently. We, the library partnered with the Friends of the Library to have a, it's the library van in the parade. I don't know if you saw it covered with lights. We're hoping to maybe have a float next time. But a lot of my team members said that they were, so many people were screaming, the library has a car? So that was pretty funny, but this was, hopefully, the idea behind it was promoting our Gingerbread House Workshop, which Jesus already mentioned is December 9th. So we're hoping to see several of the parade attendees at the, our Gingerbread House Workshop. And we, I'd invite y'all to come because it's going to be really fun. We have some surprises in store for Saturday. Inspire personal development. And what does that mean? The Texas State Library and Archives Commission recently awarded us a stipend to attend the Texas Workforce Commission Conference. And when we saw this grant come out, it was interesting because this is a first time thing. And what they were, their goal behind it was that it was to connect libraries with non-library professionals working to improve access to the workforce development, adult education, digital literacy, and many more services for job seekers. With this stipend, like I said, we were one of a handful of libraries to go. We were able to send our library assistant director, Katrina Vila, to, to the conference. And she came back with a lot of information, so hopefully you'll see some, some things incorporated in some of the programs we have in the future. incorporated in some of the programs we have in the future. Serve as a community anchor. We've updated and done some things around the library. We invite you to come in if you haven't yet. We created a new family space in the children's area that has been well-received by a lot of the community members that come in. They say they just like to come in and hang out, in the picture to the right. And we have some seating around the front of the library that was going into disrepair, and what, luckily with the Friends of the Library group, they were able to fund some new benches, so I'd invite you to come, sit down and relax under the tree. Those are nice benches. And then also, we have been identified as a fiscal year 2024 polling location. Just recently, there was an election day in November, and we had a lot of community members just stop in and say, we're so glad that we could vote in the library, we're able to pick up our items, vote real quick, and leave. So again, the library is a polling location for fiscal year 2024. And then we reorganized our service desk to create a smaller footprint. As you can see in the picture to the left, the service desk is cut in half. What that did was, it still provided the same amount of workstations, but we are now, there's a lot more usable space in the front. All right. So now we'll go into how the library has been used and some statistics from this fiscal year. As you can see, our community loves our programs. We offered 460 programs this year. We had over 21,000 participants in the program. Looking at the statistics, you can see that our youth and family programs still lead when it comes to just our offerings and the participation, but I can tell you that our adult and teen program continue to grow every year, and the participation within those programs. The picture you see to the right is our very first local author book fair. So this was just, this first year was our first time doing it, and it's, what it is is highlighting the local talent that we have here in Victoria, and this is a local author, and we're hoping to grow this event. All right, our public programs and partnerships. As you can see, the picture to the right is a lot of our existing partnerships and new partnerships that we developed this year. When we looked back at this past fiscal year, we looked at how many hours that these local partnerships put into some of our programs. It was 280 community hours. And this, again, this is just a handful, just a brief handful of people that we've partnered with, but we've had over 40 partners within the community. And I can tell you, one thing that I'm so proud of this community is that my team says, whenever and ever somebody reaches out to us or we reach out to them, they always say the same thing, yes, we want to partner with the library, and how can we help? Our technology, we do offer internet access. We have Wi-Fi and desktop computers. You can see the Wi-Fi, our Wi-Fi sessions continue to lead when it comes to statistics, because a lot of patrons do have their own handheld devices and/or laptops. So those statistics continue to be higher than our public internet computers, which are the standalone computers. And what is trained in use of electronic resources, those are all the people that come into the library and says, can you help me on the computer? Can you help me print this out or use Excel? So those are, that's the library team helping with those quick questions. And then meeting room use. As you can see, this past fiscal year, we had over 1,000, 1,200 meeting room reservations. When we broke it down, we had 600 internal usage reservations and 612 internal, correction, 600 external and 612 internal. So when we weren't using any of our rooms, someone else was. And when I look back at last fiscal year, we, this is an increase of 180 reservations. Circulation and foot traffic, these numbers right here, this is just a snapshot of the increase in circulation and foot traffic over the last four years. Circulation is just materials that are checked out from our building, so these are the physical materials. So as you can see, it continues to grow. And foot traffic, we have, we have welcomed in over 140,000 people this past year. This right here is just a comparison, and to show you the physical and digital circulation numbers. As you can see, our community still likes our physical materials, but we do have Hoopla, Library Cloud, and Libby app, which is our digital platform, and you can see that it continues to grow each year as well. So some highlights, some 2023 highlights, the highlights that I mentioned before, but wanted to give you some numbers associated with that, was the anytime pickup locker was over $41,000 from the Texas State Library and Archives Commission. We also received a grant from them for attending the workforce conference. And this is a time that I wanted to thank the Public Works and Traffic Control for restriping our library parking lot and overflow parking lot. Not only did they make it look fantastic, they updated signage around the parking lot, and they had it ready for us to welcome our summer reading program attendees. And I just wanted to briefly tell you that in June, we welcomed 15,900 people, and in July, we, it was 14,145. Those two months are our peak months of the year, so our parking lots were looking snazzy. And looking forward, looking ahead, what are we working on? Well, as I mentioned before, our goals and priorities for the, for our strategic plan that I mentioned, and then the collaboration with local partnerships and nonprofits, profits, we're hoping to grow that. We want to focus on literacy to improve our physical and digital offerings, to meet the needs of the community. And again, we all, we want to seek opportunities to implement the master plan projects at any time we can, because, you know, our eyes are set that is a long-term plan, but during our strategic plan, we want to see how far we can get, get closer to that. So I'm going to close out with just a couple pictures and highlights of some of the programs we offered this year, and please let me know if you have any questions.
And I'll briefly add, as we conclude too, and acknowledge that we have two members of the library advisory board present here tonight. You heard from Dale Zuck earlier, who is a county appointee on the library advisory board, but we also have Sarah Seller, who serves as our vice chair now, who's also present in the room. And so I want to acknowledge, you know, their presence and their service to the board, so thank you all for being here. I know there's, obviously, the library advisory board has been a big topic of discussion over the course of a couple of years, but our last few meetings have been great. I've mentioned it to you before under the leadership of Chair Dr. Jill Fox, so we're looking forward to continuing to work with them as we continue developing the vision that you heard from tonight.
Signing time is elaborate.
Yeah, it was a great report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. All right, so our second. City manager's report is our communications department. Did somebody tell you there was a prize too for being number, the second department?
I was just going to make a joke about that. If she gets a prize, I get a bigger one, because I'm last. Just kidding. But I'll take the crackers.
I already ate them.
On that note, good evening, Mayor Protem and council members and city manager. Tonight, I'm excited to be presenting to you our communications annual report. You might have to help me click.
The center button.
Got it?
Big button.
Okay. Our mission continues to be to inform and engage our residents in helpful ways, and how do we do that? Through three primary goals. Proactive storytelling, you often hear other city officials and our city managers saying, we need to tell our story. That's one of our main goals. Engaging content, and then, of course, continued educational development of our staff and the community. So you should have in front of you a printout infographic. We followed a similar course of what we did last year, but we did update some figures. This really is a big picture KPI indicator of how we're doing each year. It's not an exhaustive list of metrics that we use to indicate our success, but I do want to call out a few highlights before we go into each section of the infographic. So we'll start with information channels real quick. He looks familiar. So 88% is a significant increase, right? You might be wondering, well, how in the world? We got two new staff members for one. Lauren Mo, our Public Safety Communications Affairs Manager, she's a year and a half in and has increased the amount of support we've been dedicated providing to public safety. In addition, we have a new administrative assistant, and there's other factors involved too. Of course, with increasing catalytic efforts and projects across the city, that, of course, increases the demand for our coverage of it. And so we're excited to continue to support other departments. If you go down to the next three, you'll notice there's two different categories for engagement. You'll see communications, and then you'll see all departments' citywide engagement. With our software improvements, we have access to monitor all city departments' social media and information channels. So it's really cool to be able to present to you all a 29% increase in engagement as a successful indicator of online conversations and dialogue that our city staff outside of our own department, which is the 26 percentage mark, is having with our residents. Again, that's the prime opportunity to have educational development with the residents is through online dialogue, two-way conversation. And then at the very bottom, I wanted to call out an exciting upward movement that we made on our city's website. Our city's newsroom webpage brought us to the top two spot from the number 20 spot, I believe, and so we're excited to talk a little bit about how we did that. It was an intentional move. But first, how do we create engaging content? Well, we built off of the successful momentum of the Council Rundown series, and we created a more holistic, big-picture series called Outside the Newsroom. And this one, if you haven't seen it, is still fairly new in its concept, but we're pretty excited to show you a quick preview of it tonight. Our city's communications team processes all city breaking news items and information from our newsroom, which is kind of what's happening behind me. Welcome back to another episode of Outside the Newsroom.
Get an update on what's been happening at city council this past month.
Got Joel Novasad, who's going to talk to you about, you guessed it, the bicentennial. Victoria, you don't look a day over 200 years old.
This is an exciting time for the city of Victoria, as we embark in some transformational projects over the course of the next couple of years.
I'm Kristi Uecker, Assistant Director of Environmental Services, and we are here at the Hiller House at Riverside Park.
Victoria's bicentennial is going to be a year-long celebration, but the big day is April 13th, 2024.
This has been another episode of Outside the Newsroom. So anytime we embark on a new series, we want to monitor what is the community's feedback on this, and are we hitting the mark on the topics that they want to hear more about? And so you see, it's still fairly new, but we've gotten some positive feedback, of course, for the most part, and so that's been helpful to indicate where we're headed and to continue in the right direction. Now, we don't only use video, of course. If you recall, last year, or actually earlier this year, I talked about written content. So without further ado, I'm going to move into that section of our infographic. Our top community-engaged news releases, what does that mean? That means what do our community mostly want to hear about? How are they asking questions, whether that be in-person engagements or online? And again, we have metrics that taught, that told us really the top three engaged stories. And from left to right, you'll see the top one being, residents want to know what new businesses are staking their claim in Victoria. Get it? Longhorn Steakhouse was brought to Victoria, and that, of course, took the top spot. Kudos to Danielle and staff. Followed by, we were kind of primed for a successful engagement with this one after the Ethel Lee Tracy splash pad did close, but the community center splash pad reopened. Families were looking forward to that, and so it was really exciting, we were excited to be able to announce that to the public. And then, of course, the De Leon Plaza expansion project. Catalytic efforts like this, it's a staple in our community. Residents want to know, how are we preserving our historical aspects, but also building opportunities like the Performance Pavilion for our residents to enjoy? The next section I wanted to mention that we monitor is our website traffic. How many visitors are we getting? And particularly, to our new centralized newsroom webpage. That button that you see at the center was not there previously. We moved that up after we were able to build this new centralized hub spot of information, if you will, to make access to all of the available resources and information to our residents that much more easily accessible. So moving it up on the navigation menu with the help of James and his staff helped us to do that. You can find anything from news releases and breaking news items to how to follow us, how to subscribe to our newsletters, and then how to subscribe also to emergency alerts and road closures. That's pretty important to know. And so this is a demo of what that looks like. Of course, we don't dismiss the importance and the value of in-person communication and information sharing. We ventured off with the following departments, fire, PD, and ourselves, and we worked cohesively, cohesively worked through a program and timeline for all three departments' programs. And that way, in theory, a resident could participate from start to finish in one year's timeframe and earn their recognition of being a distinguished citizen. So the first department could be, in theory, January Communications, Citizens Academy, followed by February PD, and then concluding in September with our fire department. And so in November, we're going to continue to do an annual recognition, and this right here is our 2023 group of distinguished citizens. But their involvement shouldn't end here. We are continuing our efforts with the alumni program that we just sought out to, to, I guess, create last year, and so this is our second annual year of creating that program. You'll see in the center, we've got Ms. Rebecca Spears, who helped us promote this year's program, and she actually now serves on our planning commission, and that is a great thing to see, because if they're investing in us, we want to invest in them, and then them into our community, and she's doing just that. So we're excited to have her as part of our engaged alumni group. And then in the upper-left corner, you see Hesu's presenting updates at our latest alumni luncheon. And we actually, so the program that I first started in was 2020. Think of all the years that happened since 2007 or '08, I believe, which was the very first year that this program was initiated. We called every single person amongst all of our staff, and we invited them to this program. And so we look forward to reengage those groups, whatever year they participated, and help them to continue their track, really, with not only being informed about what's going on in the community, but getting involved in our community. So exciting stuff there. I want to switch over to team awards and recognitions real quick. It's another, of course, KPI that we use to understand what's successful within our community as a whole, but within the industry, if you will, right, of local government, how are we doing compared to the state? How are we doing compared within the nation? And we earned first place, national award, for our coverage of the Green Ribbon Project that involved a live stream of Daryl's ribbon-cutting ceremony, and then, of course, coverage online of its progress. Then we have Lauren Mo, who had to step out, but she participated in our city's first-ever Leadership Academy. We were very proud of her for doing that, and then she also this year returned to present. She also presented at our first-ever up-and-coming female leadership conference. Now, I said "our," meaning the cities. This was actually a coordinated effort hosted by PD and other partnering organizations, and I also was able to speak to a great group, a vibrant group of young girls, and they were awesome, so it just, kudos goes off to PD and the other departments who helped host that. I completed the TML Leadership Academy, and then, of course, Sam Hankins contributed six write-ups to the Texas Town and City Magazine. Anytime we get to showcase what our colleagues are doing, what other city departments are doing, it's a win, and we got to do this within the, within the state. And you'll see in the lower-right corner, that's HR's efforts with the Leadership Academy. So kudos to them. And then finally, we did earn a statewide first place for Outside the Newsroom. The last topic I want to touch on is our communication services. So you'll see from top to bottom, we've got a color gradient indicating who we provided the most amount of services and support to. And of course, you see right up there behind us is public safety. So what contributed to that? We embarked on a communications-embedded program about a year and a half ago with the new role of a public safety communications manager, aka a PIO. And what Lauren Mo, who holds that position, helps do is build on the already-successful PIO and educational programs and efforts, information-sharing programs for both fire and PD. This new role was established to help dedicate communication resources and efforts to those two departments, so it's been great so far, and we look forward to seeing all the new leadership adventures she takes on, along with PD and Fire Command staff. Naturally, it resulted in OEMs hosting a public safety full-scale training exercise and asking us, as a department, to be a part of that. And so again, you, you see the public safety at the top, it's also because of this big effort that took place this past year. Really, everyone who was involved in this did such a great job, and, you know, public safety is the first priority in. safety is the first priority in any full-scale incident that could occur, but we didn't want to forget and just omit the importance also of information sharing, and so it was a great effort. We learned some strengths that we had, we learned relationship-building and coordination, then some resources that maybe we're lacking. But overall, it was a great, great exercise, and we look forward to continuing preparedness in general. And the last really effort that I'll mention is city productions and ceremonies. Again, that falls under the services provided. It's one of the examples I wanted to highlight, because it's been an ongoing and increasing area of service we're providing. You'll see several departments listed here and represented by the Duck Pond, Groundbreaking, the Dog Park, that's Parks, and City Manager's Office. You'll see Fire Station One's ribbon-cutting, Mayor's State of the City, and the Laurent Street most recently. And we really do anything from event coordination to inviting media and onsite coverage now, which includes livestream, and after the fact, just really showcasing what our city's staff are working so hard to do every single day, and we want to celebrate with them and with our community. So looking ahead, what do we have in store? Continuing to engage our alumni, asking them to come and be a part of further programs and efforts with us throughout the year. We want to promote, almost like UHV or VC would, our distinguished citizen educational track. We want to increase our support across all city departments, and we want to continue to collaborate with CVB during their bicentennial year. And so I'll wrap it up really quickly with a video that helps kind of showcase and highlight what we do in action. Thank you. If you have any questions, let me know. All right, thank you all.
Good job. Just really quickly, thank you, Ashley. I'm sure we can all agree that, under her leadership, our communications department has really, really, really gone to a whole, completely different level, so thank you for your leadership and your vision, and you and your team's hard work in helping us get to that.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Mr. Arzer, we have executive session?
Yes, sir. Very quick one, I promise.
All right. At this time, this will conclude our public portion of the meeting. I do plan on taking a recess, but I'll let you close everything out.
How long?
Five minutes.
Okay, thank you.
The city council recess for executive session on the 5th day of December 2023 at 7:10 PM. The subject matter of executive session deliberation is as follows. Executive session in accordance with Texas Government Code 551.07, 551.071, and 551.072.